We have a motion to return from executive. Thank you. Thank you. All favor. Any votes? Okay, welcome to our regular public meeting. Please rise and rise to the right.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this time I'd like to open the floor for nominations for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Alice Myers, Dr. Myers.
Any other nominations? Okay, very done. Many who have a vote, please.
This is Thomas Sello.
Yes.
Mr. Conover. Dr. Dalton.
Yes.
Mrs. Lemick.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Dr. Myers.
Yes, thank you. Motion approved. Congratulations. Please come and take your seat. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Both our regular and executive meeting from March 19th as well as our special meeting from March 27th.
Motion Dalton.
Thank you.
Second Myers.
Thank you. Any questions? Very done. Many have roll copies.
This is Tom Sello.
Yes.
Dr. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Lemick.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Dr. Dalton.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mrs. Zentai.
Yes, motion approved. Okay, moving on, I will turn the over to Mr. Kobe for his presentation.
Thank you very much, President. Our school performance reports are public and posted on the district webpage. We'll be unpacking them with staff and board committee, and we will have about that in May. While there's much work to be done after reviewing the reports, it is heartening that Dawes Avenue School did come out of status this year. That's a testament to the staff, the administration, the parents, of course, the students, all the work that they do. We're working on summer plans, including summer school. I've had some queries from parents about summer school. Are going to plan at summer school? We have some challenges, including the limited number of staff being able to work with the programs, and all the demands the summer brings with fewer staff to manage it. We should be able to provide some programming and will report this to parents after running by our instruction committee for the first week in May. Spring has sprung, has it? It's allergy season. But there's all kinds of activities: sports, field trips, celebrations, Jagger Awards night. What was that? Dawes Day Night? What was that? Dawes Melody? We've got a three-year...
Our name is coming.
What was it called? The Special Someone Dance at Dawes. We had some bottles in the buildings today for all of this. We also had some very special guests in the building, because every child can work there. Another thing that happens in the springtime is you don't want to get outdoors. And why should our middle school students be any different? And we've had some issues with spring springing, with middle-level adolescents, and with less structured time. Mr. P is working with his staff to limit those opportunities for students to get into the scuffle and make sure that our kids are safe. Our internet continues to be a blessing and a curse. We discovered there are five Instagram sites with the Jordan Road School logo on them. One of them is legit. We've been in touch, thanks to Frank Palladine, our tech staff back there with Instagram, and are requesting that they shut those sites down for using our logo without permission. Once again, it's budget season, too. This time, I'm not happy to report that the cuss are to the bone. We've had a very difficult week. We had an opportunity to work together, see very negative, ugly rules for staff that we dream, admire, and have given much to the school district community. We fought. The SPEA has chipped in. The foundation has chipped in, the PTO, the board, parents. We turned a stack of letters to my office that are on their way to Trent. Our voice has been heard, with other school districts getting cut, too. And we'll continue to fight to get funds to be able to hopefully renew some of those staff. Why some? Because renewing all of them with the way the pending legislation is written doesn't provide us with enough money and creates a bigger fiscal cliff in '25, '26. The last thing I want to do is leave Summers Point with a surprise fiscal surprise cliff a year from now at this time. Outside the items from tonight's presentation, we've also done some things relative to the budget. We eliminated a full-time benefit administrative position. We're in the process of modifying a 10-month administrative, sorry, from 12 to a 10-month administrative position. We also took one teaching position through attrition from a retirement. This experience is lucky that this school district can pull together, and it's going to need to pull together with some of the consequences of these non-renewals. We're going to have to rethink some important programmatic elements, including how we provide interventions to keep the MTSS structure. Staff is going to have to pull together with the board, with the administration, and parents are going to have to have their voices heard in order to make sure that students are still getting the supports and the help that they need. But as a community, I know you can do that. You've demonstrated that to me before. I need to thank specifically Mrs. Ponoroy, Mr. Young, for the preparation of the presentation, the budget, and the budget itself, but all the other people that contributed to that process, the administrative team, the SPEA, the valuation, all staff and support staff, of course, the Board of Education. The budget is a roadmap to a more fiscally stable future for Summers Point. This won't be easy next year. We've got to roll up our shirt sleeves and do some work. Still work to provide the best education for our students that we can. But I think moving forward in the years to come, we'll be better off for it. With that said, I'm going to ask the principals to bring some joy to our life right now. Mrs. Wagner, would you like to go first?
I love you. Thank you.
This is definitely a bright spot, and it kind of saddened me. So thank you to our Students of the Month for being a bright light, and to our Staffelty of the Month members at Dawes Avenue for being bright lights. I did want to mention Julie Antell and Mr. Chris Giessis, who were our Staffelty Members of the Month. They're not here tonight, but they're amazing. I did give them their certificates and their awards, and I talked about them at our Staffelty meeting this month, and they both had numerous nominations from colleagues and parents. And that's just a testament of not only their dedication to our school, but their connections that they've made with our students, and their willingness to go way above and beyond what's outlined in their job description. So we can give them a round of applause even though they're not... I'm so happy to introduce our kindergarten Student of the Month for March, who's Jasleen Hannah. Jasleen, come on up.
Nice job.
Jasleen is in Ms. Schaefer's class. And Mrs. Schaefer said that Jasleen is a kind and hardworking student. She has made so much progress this year in reading and in math. She is currently reading above grade level, and she's also an amazing leader in her classroom. We are so proud of her. Mrs. Schaefer is so proud of her, and the whole school is so proud of her. So great job, Jasleen. All right, I'm so excited to announce that we do have Mrs. Ford here to talk about our next Student of the Month. I'm going to have Mrs. Ford come up and introduce this student.
So for first grade student of the month this month, we have Cole Pitt. Show everybody your beautiful smile. So Mrs. Busner and I were both so excited to have you be the first grade student of the month. We're so proud of you. I wrote some notes down because I didn't want to forget to tell everybody all the great stuff about you. Cole has a great heart. He's just so kind to everyone in his class and everyone in the whole grade. He's super caring. If somebody's sad or somebody spills something, he's the first person to come over and help. He follows all directions in the classroom. You know, as soon as his group is called, he comes right up and gets ready to work. He doesn't complain. Sometimes he gets a little tired by the end of the day, but other than that, he does never complain. One of my favorite things about him is he's very, very clever. He has a really good vocabulary, and he says the funniest little things. And sometimes he'll have the entire class just busting up laughing over something that he says that's just really clever and funny. But he's made so much progress this year, especially when things get difficult. That used to really frustrate him. And now he's much more confident this year, and he just does what he has to do and does his hard work. And if it's hard, it's hard, and he does it anyway. So we're super proud of you. Congratulations.
All right, we have Mr. Taylor here to announce our second grade student of the month.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Our pleasure to present our student of the month, Jackson. I had the pleasure to also teach Jackson's older brother Doug. Thinking of reasons why I made Jackson the obvious choice as mine, student of the month is simple. Progression and patience. When Jackson started in September, he had so much knowledge and wanted to share it. He is a student that loves learning about the world around him. However, like most students in the beginning of the year, they are learning to have patience to learn. Anticipation is never a problem with Jackson, but when he got the chance to talk, he would practically give a lecture. I had to look at his file to make sure he doesn't have a degree in a particular field because he can talk forever about a subject. Then I told him the 30 seconds or less rule. He can explain things in 30 seconds or less. I taught him to think about what to say, and more importantly, the patience to express it. It was difficult at first, but he has improved so much since then. Not only is he showing patience in his expression, but he is displaying patience with his work and with his peers. Jackson is, quite frankly, a teacher's dream. A more than willing student who wants to improve, and so can now, if he shares it with whoever listens. And he can now do it in 30 seconds or less.
And we have Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, come on up and announce our third grade student of the month.
All right, before I start, one of the things I like about doing this is I get to see some of my old students. So it's good to see the Dawson crew, Kalen, we got Ditsy over there, Dougie. It's really nice. But tonight, we're going to... Tonight, we're going to honor Aria. So, all right, come on up. Aria's great. She comes into school each day ready to work. She likes to socialize with friends. She likes to work hard. She likes to tell me stories. And I learned a lot about her over the school year. She's a big Top Gun fan. 80s, anything 80s, Mario, Batman, all really good things. But these aren't things that necessarily earn you Student of the Month. So with 15 kids in my homeroom, I kind of look and try to decide, all right, what's the distinguishing factor that makes someone stand out? So for this month, it was easy to pick Aria because we do these benchmark tests once every trimester essentially, and also at the beginning of the school year. And Aria's test for both reading and math showed tremendous growth. And it's kind of a big deal because I think Aria would agree with me that she definitely favors reading and writing over math a little bit more, which you agree? But both went up great. So it's easy to kind of improve on things when you're doing things that you like and you're willing to work at them. But I was impressed that she went up in both because she's not as big of a fan as men. So then when I reflect, I think about like her day in, day out. She comes into intervention every day. She works hard. She wants to get the problems. If she doesn't get it, she wants to try it again. But for writing, she's always willing to go back and revise, work on her stories. And so I think she's a testament that idea of like putting in the work a little bit each day ends up paying off at the end for like tremendous growth. So without a doubt, you've earned it for this month, and let's congratulate her on it. All right, thank you, Mrs. Wagner. How about a round of applause? All right, Mrs. Wagner started with the grownups, so I am too. In the heart of our school community shines a beacon of dedication, compassion, and excellence. Samantha Nodis, come on up. Sam is one of our beloved self-contained teachers at Jordan Road. With unwavering commitment, Sam embodies the true essence of teaching, going above and beyond the call of duty. Like today. To nurture, or yesterday. To nurture and support our students. Her classroom is not just a place of learning, it's a sanctuary where every child feels valued, understood, and empowered. Sam's boundless generosity and selflessness touch the lives of all who know her, creating a ripple effect of kindness and inspiration through our entire school. As we honor Samantha Nodis as our Staffelty Member of the Month, we extend our deepest gratitude for her tireless efforts and her heartfelt devotion. Thank you, Sam, for being an extraordinary educator and a shining light in our community. Samantha Nodis. All right, moving on. Tonight, as we gather, because this young man is not here. Tonight, as we gather to celebrate our Students of the Month, there's a noticeable absence that weighs on our hearts. Chansley Exanis, a remarkable fourth grade student, has been nominated for this prestigious honor. However, Chansley, with his exceptional talent and warm spirit, has recently moved away from our community. Though he cannot be here with us tonight, his presence is deeply felt and his absence keenly noticed. Chansley, we miss you dearly, but we also celebrate you and your achievements. Congratulations on your nomination. As you embark on this new chapter, know that our thoughts and well wishes accompany you wherever you go. Chansley is great. He's one of our very high-achieving and gifted fourth graders. His family has moved away, and I is grieving this, especially during my lunch meeting. So if you're out there hearing this somehow, Chansley just wants to meet you. However, our fifth grade student is here. Maisy, come on up. Maisy was nominated by Kathy Staub. Amazing Maisy is my nickname for her. It's the perfect description of Maisy. She is kind, thoughtful, and comes to class every day with an amazing attitude. She's always willing to help others and is a pleasure to have in class. She is extremely hardworking and conscientious and tries her best in everything she does. Always sharing positive examples and treating others with respect is the Maisy way. The Student of the Month accolade is well deserved. Congratulations, Maisy, again from Mrs. Sello. All right, moving right along to sixth grade Alexis Dawson. Come on down.
Hi, I'm Miss Alberg. Miss Callie and I chose Alexis as the sixth grade student of the month because in both of our classrooms, she consistently demonstrates all the positive attributes we love to see in a student. She's hardworking, always striving to do her best, which is evident in the growth she's made in both reading and math. She's responsible, completes her assignments in a timely manner, and focuses on the task at hand. She works well with others, and when doing partner or group work, is a positive role model. And last, despite the fact that she doesn't always laugh at my hilarious jokes, she is always kind and respectful to everyone.
So as Miss Alberg said, Miss Callie did not send us something. And since I took the time to write this, I'm going to read it to Alexis. Alexis shines as an outstanding student, and the sixth grade team was still the nominator of her exceptional contributions to both her classmates and teachers. It was a pleasure to learn more about Alexis's passion for horseback riding today during today's pizza party discussion about extracurricular activities. So congratulations, Alexis, on well-deserved selection as Student of the Month, and this recognition marks just the beginning of what is sure to be a continued journey of excellence for you. All right, so good job. All right, next up, we have Kalen Mann. Someone else come to read something about you. So Kalen is kind, thoughtful, sweet seventh grade student who makes an effort to do well in school, both academically and socially. She is quick to offer help to her peers and teachers. Additionally, Kalen is active in extracurricular activities and works well with her teammates and peers. The seventh grade team is very proud of Kalen and believes she deserves to be recognized as Student of the Month. Congratulations, Kalen Mann, from Miss Alberg. I've been breaking cameras since I was seven. And finally, I did not see her, Abby Sullivan. She was at Leadership. I was hoping maybe she'd show up tonight, but we're going to read this for her anyway. And interestingly enough, Abby Sullivan was my Jack Pride recipient. So what I'm reading, I did read at the award ceremony the other night. Abby is an outstanding eighth grade student athlete whose remarkable talents extend far beyond the playing field. From the moment I met her at last year's picnic, where her prowess in throwing a football caught my attention, Abby has continued to astound me with her dedication and leadership. As a student athlete, she embodies the values of teamwork, perseverance, and sportsmanship, setting a shiny example for her peers both on and off the field. Abby's commitment to excellence extends beyond athletics as she consistently demonstrates kindness, integrity, and a genuine concern for others. Her ability to balance academic achievement with her athletic pursuits is a testament to her hard work and determination. Abby Sullivan truly embodies the spirit of Jordan Road School, inspiring us all with her passion, talent, and unwavering commitment to success. So congratulations again, Abby Sullivan.
Okay, I wanted to thank our principals for making their presentations. I wanted to thank our teachers and staff members who take the time and make recommendations, say all the beautiful things that they say about our students. And I wanted to thank and congratulate our students for achieving this honor. We're so proud of you. If you guys could all come up now with your certificate as well as your nominating person so we can take a group picture, that would be fantastic. Come on up.
Thank you, students and staff. So many things made Summers Point a special school district. I've had the opportunity to get around since I retired as a superintendent of the department five years ago, working in three other school districts. And the closeness and the care and the concern that our staff has for their kids here is really unique. They are one caring bunch, and I just want you to know, you should be proud of them. You should support them as much as you can, especially knowing the challenges that are in front of you. Dawes Avenue School and Jordan Road School are what we made them. We've got work ahead of us, but we've got great people to do that work. So let's get on with our budget here.
Other direction.
Other direction. Thanks, Frank. Go anywhere with that. It's the Kobe diet test here. Let's see how you do. The Board of Education will review the effectiveness of existing policies, update and create new policies where necessary, and support proposals that optimize district resources for the most effective delivery of instruction. Another goal is that the Board of Education will strive to have the most effective and efficient board and committee meetings and maintain the highest level of boardsmanship by following a set of collectively established norms and encouraging and continuing in participation of the KESA-sponsored meetings, trainings, and workshops. When you get old, you have to do that. The Board of Education will review the strategic plan created in conjunction with the community, the teaching staff, the administration, on a five-year rotation, most recently in summer 2019. So what does that mean might be happening soon? To determine the aspects of the plan that have already been implemented as well as identify the items that... as well as identify the items that need to be addressed forward. Plan on hearing about that. Goal number one for the district, student achievement. Ensure lessons are delivered to students at their instructional, independent, and challenged levels. School culture and climate. Create a unified district that embraces diversity, values academic achievement, and encourages community pride. Communication and parent-community partnerships. Ensure effective communication between home, school, and community in order to build strong and stronger partnerships. So the highlights of this budget are continued focus on student outcomes in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Attendance. Free full-day preschool for 3- and 4-year-olds. We're over 90% of our universe now, which means, according to the state, they're able to give us that funding. Anticipating a courtyard project that is being funded with grant funds that sunset the end of September. Shared service employees pending. A psychologist with Mainland Regional, we're working out the details on. And preschool staff and support for Waynes, that is on the agenda for approval tonight. Facility rental revenue for Dawes Avenue currently. We're looking to expand that revenue with efforts we've been making relative to New York Avenue School, getting it used, repositioned. And of course, we have the end of the $3.3 million RFS grant that I already mentioned. So that money that the federal government rolled out as a result of COVID gave a bathtub full of money to school districts and government entities. And all of those entities now are struggling with spreading that down in a timely way under the rules and getting used to the fact that that money doesn't last, that you can't depend upon that money in the upcoming year. So one of the biggest factors affecting our budget is enrollment because the state funds us based on student enrollment, the income of the people who live in the community, and also the assessed value of homes in the community. One of the dynamics we've had in Summers Point is essentially an enrollment that has been halved over the past 12 years. That drastically affects the state aid. Essentially, we're losing about 35 students a year on average. I'm going to ask Mr. Leung, Mark Leung, who is a retired business administrator, who's been helping us out in the business office, to participate in the presentation tonight. Please welcome Mr. Leung.
So as Mr. Kovic stated, the state aid is directly correlated to your enrollment. And so we built this table here to show the board and the public what is going on with this S2 bill. So the S2 bill was created for districts who were had increasing enrollment to equalize the state funding with districts who were had decreasing enrollment. So those districts that had flat funding before 2018, 19, there was a flat funding across the board. Those districts were penalized for having increasing enrollment. And so this bill was to create and equalize the funding based on enrollment. So you see in this table, this Senate year bill, the enrollment has dropped significantly. And you see your state aid. And I think it's real important when you look at it, is always write on your cumulative loss. You have a $4 million cumulative loss in state aid funding with this year specifically being over $1.1 billion. That's a significant loss to many people. So what is the impact? I think Mr. Kovic explained a lot of the impact in his opening remarks and his presentation. We have 13 certified staff positions, non-renewed. And then when you have staff positions that are eliminated like that, what is affected is your program. And one of the programs significantly affected is the multi-tiered systems of supports, the MTSS. And furthermore, maintaining your buildings and capital projects had to be postponed or canceled. So how did we mitigate that loss? We mitigated it through an increased tax levy. So the allowable 2% tax levy. Then what you see there, which may be confusing, is called eligible bank cap. So the board in previous years did not raise the full 2%. That money that wasn't fully raised previously sits in the bank, what they call a bank cap. The board can recall that and then raise the tax levy of that eligible bank cap. So there's 1.96%, and if it isn't raised, the board loses that. And then you lose that in almost a compounding interest type of effect. Furthermore, our healthcare adjustment tax, which is additional tax levy that's allowable to the board because we were told by our health broker that healthcare adjustment is going to be 7%. So because of that, we're allowing 0.49% additional tax levy. So that amounts to 4.45%, which helps mitigate that loss. Furthermore, we didn't just look at staffing. We looked at other accounts. There was a 10% across-the-board reduction in all supply accounts. The board had foresight of putting surplus into reserve accounts. There's a healthy maintenance reserve balance. The board is going to, what we're recommending, the board approves a $250,000 withdrawal from maintenance reserve to help balance the budget. And then the last thing there is the grants, your special revenue funding. What we're asking or recommending is that we are going to carry over grant funding from this year, not spend it, roll it into next year along with the anticipated special revenue funding. And that will help mitigate the loss in funding. So debt service. Debt service is just like for a homeowner, a homeowner's mortgage. Debt service is taken when we're doing referendums. So you see there the two columns in 2011 and 2016 series. Those are the years that the bond referendums went out. The thing to really recognize here is your 2011 series, bonds become due and they expire in 2026. And then most importantly, as you look at your top year, 2024, 2025, which is your current fiscal year that we're budgeting for, there's a payment of principal and interest of $963,063. Ms. Conroy?
So what's included in your budget is two sections to balance. You have your revenues and your expenditures. And our total budget is $19,086,180. And what is core to that, we say, are buckets. You have your Fund 10, your operating budget, your Fund 20, your restricted funds, the federal and state. You have your Fund 30, capital improvements, and Fund 40, which is your debt service payments. So your 2425 total revenue budget consists of your special revenue fund 20, which is just a little over $3 million. Your debt service fund, which is $963,063, and your biggest part is your general fund, Fund 10, which is a little over $15 million.
So Ms. Conroy showed you the revenues, and that was kind of the summary slide. I'm going to get a little more granular here to show you the breakdown of the revenue streams. So as Ms. Conroy mentioned, your Fund 10, which is your general operating fund, the revenue streams for that are off to the right of the table. The main one you'll see there is your tax levy. And then you have the state funding. And I think what's important for the board to look at there is the disparity between how much falls on the local taxpayers versus the state. And then the fund balance. What that is, is surplus. That surplus in a previous year's budget that has to be used in a future budget. So that's the budget and fund balance used in the upcoming budget. I mentioned previously the maintenance reserve withdrawal being recommended to help balance the budget. And then you have your miscellaneous revenues. Your miscellaneous revenues are your bank interest and your facility rentals that Mr. Kovic mentioned previously. And then a very small amount is your special education Medicare initiative. Moving on to a debt battery in the...
Is it switching? I think you said a debt battery. Yep, I'll switch it to you.
Okay, Fund 20s.
Done.
I can go backwards. I can go back one, please.
It's not responding for some reason.
There we go. Okay, so very similar to your Fund 10, you have your special revenue, which is your Fund 20. Ms. Conroy talked about the different buckets. Here's your bucket for your Fund 20, which is your grant funding. Now, this is an expenditure slide. I'm sorry. This is the wrong slide. We're talking about...
Let me just get out of this for a second, come back.
There we go. Okay, so your special revenue fund amounts to a little over $3 million. And off to your right, very similar to the previous slide, are your streams of revenue for special revenue grant funding. You have, Mr. Kovic talked a little bit about your preschool grade program. You have preschool educational aid of over $1.6 million. The ESEA is your title branch, your Title 1, Title 2, Title 3, and Title 4. And your IDEA is your special education grant funding. Then you have your non-public funding. And other is scholarships and student activities. But you see the primary amount there are your titles, your special education, your preschool grant funding. And then finally, you have the debt service, which we talked about as like a home mortgage. The important thing to note there is the fact that that $963,063 is broken up into a local tax levy and a state aid. So when you go out to referendum, you do a public vote on a referendum. If it passes, the state will pay up to 34%. And as you can see there, for this year's amount, the local share is $747,927. And then we get state aid funding of debt service of $215,136.
Your 2425 general fund expenditures from Fund 10 amount to $159,396. And your bulk of it is in salaries and benefits. You have your support services, a little over $2 million. Your maintenance operations, almost $2 million. Administration is $1.1 million. Transportation, $474,000. And your tuition is $221,000. And out of your special revenue fund, Fund 20 is $329,71. And there are also your salaries and benefits. You got most of it. Construction is $1.6 million. Your benefits are $672,000. Support services, $267,000. Maintenance and operations, $108,000. Admin, $150,000. And your tuition is $231,000. And again, we have our debt service Fund 40, which is $963,063.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you just give a little bit of an explanation for under Fund 20, what support services mean? Like, what are the support services? Just as a benefit or a benefit or a... Thank you.
Sure, we'll do. So you see here, this table shows the tax impact. And I think this is the culminating slide here. So if you take a look, you look at last year's tax levy, which is the first row and then that first column. And then you see the proposed tax levy, the differential, which is that almost 4.5% increase is an amount to a $500, a little over $500,000 differential. That's the increase in your tax levy. And then from the township, we received the total taxable assessed value. And that's what we use to then calculate the school tax rate. So you see your school tax rate there. And then you use what's called your average assessed home value. Last year in 2023, '24, it was a little over $210,000. And this current year, it's a little over $212,000. Multiply that tax rate times the average assessed home value, and you get the school taxes for your average assessed house. So for 2024, '25, for $212,587 assessed home value, your taxes will be $2,205.80, showing an increase of $122.80. The important thing to note here is this is just Summers Point school taxes. On your tax bill, you'll see municipal taxes, and you'll also see the regional high school taxes. So this is just the Summers Point school tax impact. Does the board have any questions? I'd like to thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you. Thank you both for all the work you put into this project. At this point, I'd like to open up to the public for any questions, comments regarding the 2024, '25 budget. Any members like the public, that you'd like to address the board? Budget, yes, just for budget. Okay, hearing none of public comment for budget. Questions, comments is now closed. Now I'd like to open up to the public. Any member of the public would like to address the board regarding agenda items, please.
Good evening. My name is Jeanne Saccio. I am president for the Summers Point Education Association. I would like to address you regarding personnel items, particularly non-renewal teachers. These are hard times, and these decisions have not been easy. And hiring people is one of the worst things that happens in a school district. And we know that it was hard as well for admin as well as staff. So now we turn our eyes to the attention of encouraging the board to exhaust any and all options available to save as many jobs as possible of the 13 who are non-renewed. Cutting staff has a long-term effect on the district and the community. It hurts the families of people who lose their jobs. It hurts the remaining staff, the students, and the community. And also hurts your future ability to recruit and retain good teachers. All you have to do is look at the turnovers that our Summers Point schools have experienced as the last round of cuts. So I will try to end on a positive note, saying that we can all work together, no matter what happens, to try to get back to a fully staffed district. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Ms. Saccio.
Good evening. Teresa Doperty, 26th Rockwood Tribe. I have two comments related to agenda items. The first is regarding the 7K 52 donation. We were very excited to be able to raise such significant funds this year towards field trips and helping as the students will experience. Special thank you to Stacy Brookbain and Danielle McKelping for their tremendous effort to organize and run multiple fundraisers this year. Also, thanks to the amazing community for their generous support. We did uncover some issues when trying to use the funds. There were a lack of processes to organize, manage, and fund field trips. So these gaps gave us some concerns with the ability to interact with the whole distribution of the funds amongst the grades and make sure that every student would benefit from the donation as we were attending. So we're very hopeful. We pointed some of these out and worked with the administration and hope that... and hope that these gaps will be addressed coming into next year. Regarding the 7S, well, gun evil for me today. Exposing some concerns with our district supporting the pursuit of a LEAP grant for shared services for bloodhound tracking and DNA detection of narcotics and explosives. Understanding that only certain things can be used, that LEAP grants can only be used for certain things. It just felt like it was a bit of a mystery why this would be even the biggest need, why this would be something that would be pursued with these valuable funds. So I just wanted to again urge you all to focus on school safety initiatives that are necessary, evidence-based, visibly responsible, and developmentally appropriate. Also considering the very impactful mental health crisis we're dealing with, school-based security efforts should concentrate on efforts in this area.
This is Dockerty. And thank you to the PTO and especially the members within the PTO who worked so hard to create such amazing fundraising activities and success. Any members of the public, any other members of the public that you'd like to address the board?
Hello, my name is John Dawson. One would like words on Summers Point. Up until yesterday, I had three daughters in the district. My youngest daughter is really getting to play in the 70th partial program now. Chop. Due to the lack of aids within the special education department. I came here today to ask the district why, but it's not the district. Ms. Wagner did everything possible while I was admin. Throwing a question on everything possible. My daughter got moved from Mr. Taylor, Mr. Smith, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Doyle, all in one school year. When that well-reined archie moved over here, Ms. Notice's class, where again, we were making strides. But unfortunately, the personnel was not here to meet our IEPs. It's a circumstance that doesn't negate responsibility. But the responsibility does align solely with the district. The state is not giving you the tools to fund and hire the people that are needed. I've heard nothing but grumblings in the past eight years that I've dealt with the district between my oldest daughter, who's 14 and graduating this year, and my youngest daughter, who's nine and coming into this school next year as a fourth grader, from parents who have 405s and IEPs. I'm sorry, 504s and IEPs about they're not being met correctly. And I've asked them, what have you done? Have you written to the state or are you just addressing the school? Said they talked to the school. But we've got to get together and address the state with these issues. It is the school's responsibility, but if the state ties your hands, how bad can it be? I hope my daughters want to come back into this district in September, out of the CHOP program. And hopefully, we'll go back into Ms. Notice's class. Because Ms. Notice is an amazing teacher. All actually, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Smith, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Doyle had all made extremely wonderful strides with my daughter. But it just wasn't enough to get her over the line. So now that's why she went into the 70th partial program. I just hope that the district tries to focus on getting these aids. I know not a lot of people are applying for these jobs. So I just hope that eventually the school can get districts and get these aids in place for the other parents that are struggling with the 504 and IEP to get the help they need. And they don't need to move their child out of the district, even for the short amount of time my daughters want to be out. This is her third school, fifth classroom in one school, or a ninth grade, because of behavior issues. Kind of hard to justify why things aren't getting better. But I really hope the board will make strides in hiring enough personnel there. There's going to be problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Appreciate you sharing your background information. Thank you very much. Any other members of the public that you'd like to address the board? Okay, hearing none, our comment is now closed. And we are moving on to school and community. We did receive correspondence this month. And it's the correspondence that was just a few years ago in public comment. So we did receive that correspondence. Do you need community affairs, Dr. Dolan?
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Graduation promotion. Each admin presented the graduation promotion for eighth graders have been moved because Mainland is having their graduation the night that we originally intended. That's on June 17. There are many, many activities that are going to occur, as well as our athletics between now and the end of the school year. So we're ending with a bang. There will be Bay Fest fundraisers. We discussed repairs to New York Avenue for the poorness. County Library is interested in New York Avenue, but nothing is firm. We've got an architect and engineer in to look at it. And then it will go through their channels. So we are waiting to hear back about that, but nothing is firm. Also regarding our space utilization, nothing is firm with that either. Mr. Kovik met with preschool, the third and fourth grade teachers. And some of the challenges were brought up and then discussed. And we are still primarily in an information gathering stage. Oh, one other thing is we would encourage all families that are indicated to sign up for free reduced lunch. And administration can help them do that discreetly. That was it. That was big topics, big topics.
Thank you. For members, do you have any questions, Dr. Dolan? Okay, hearing none. Moving on. Dr. Mustafa for Foundation for Education is on the board.
Okay. We met, our next meeting is on 4/29 at 6:30. That's Monday. That's here at Jordan Road, in the library. We had an event today, and that was very successful. I don't know the exact figures. We're very lucky in this community. We have businesses that support our foundation. And it was like a happy hour for the teachers and a meeting for people. We had the Chelleys and Charlies donate. And Atstopo, there's another restaurant that donated, but I'm not sure the name. But the foundation would always like people to attend their events. They're always looking for volunteers to help. And they are a very nice group. The money they raise does help our students go on trips and band competitions and all kinds of things. So if anybody has any time, they'd certainly volunteer with them.
Thank you, Ashol. I think the totals were, they were kind of figuring out toward the end of the event, 3,000 were able to just run the base amendment.
I don't know who won.
Which is fantastic. No, they had, I don't, I don't remember.
I don't have a follow-up either.
But yeah, I know that they were finalizing that number, which is great for an afternoon event. It was a nice event, but it took the 11% kind of money off of a fun simple thing. Okay, John, City Council, please. That is me. The city council did, I've wired four years to all board members. And they sent it to all of us. But at their last, their meeting to money, or at their last city council meeting, they did have a resolution that they made for the state in terms of the funding issue and the concerns that we've had. They did make, they didn't, um, to identify that the problem and the state of crisis that we're currently in with our state funding numbers to identify it and to ask for the state to address those concerns. They did have a resolution. Other than that, there's nothing else to report. Okay, moving on to finance operations. This is Thomas Sella. Finance coming in, please.
Okay, well, we met on April 1st. And we had a couple discussions about proposals for getting reports of your estimates. We also talked about participation in data service. Just people that recommended supplies and services. And we also reviewed the list of projects that the maintenance and studio group concluded during spring break. Several of the items were also done by outside contractors. Let me discuss the motions.
Thank you. Any questions? This is Thomas Sella. Okay, hearing none. I have a motion to approve items. I have a, I have a, I have a, okay, thank you. Do you? I have a motion to approve items 7A through S, please. 7A through S.
Motion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, our roll call, please.
This is Thomas Sella. Yes. Dr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Dr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Endicott?
Yes, thank you. Motion approved. Okay, moving on to item 17. Adoption of our final 2020-25 budget. And a motion to approve. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, our roll call, please.
This is Thomas Sella.
Yes.
Dr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Dr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Endicott?
Yes, thank you. Motion approved. Okay, we are adding a general item to underfinance and operations. And this is according to the board's resolution.
Sure. Resolution says the Summers Point Board of Education authorizes the Summers Point Board Business Administrator and Superintendent as well as designated board members to meet with the Summers Point City Council, Mayor, and Administrator as appropriate to discuss the Summers Point Board of Education's request to receive the Board of Education's proportionate share of tax revenue from the affordable housing payment and move taxes, otherwise known as PILOT, or other tax abatement programs.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion, Myers.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Our roll call, please.
Dr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas Sella?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Dr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Endicott?
Yes, thank you. Motion approved. Moving on to personnel. Dr. Myers, any things I need to report about negotiations? Negotiations?
Nothing for negotiations.
Okay, thank you. Oh. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. My computer screen jumped. I apologize. I'm correct. Instruction committee.
Okay, yes, instruction committee met 4/8. And there was almost a full committee in attendance. We started at 5:30 and ended at 6:45. Initiatives that were outlined for us was that our curriculum director conferred with Mainland about the SEL assessments. And what Dr. Mainland found was that Mainland is using the same assessments that Summers Point is using. So that's going to help our students as we move forward. We are also, Dr. Vanello is also meeting with the Director of Evaluation and Planning to develop an articulation with Mainland. So that means that our learning objectives will scaffold to Mainland's learning objectives for Algebra I, so that our students have a good chance of being successful in Algebra I once they get to Mainland. And that also allows them, for those who are college-bound, if they have Algebra I here at Summers Point, when they go to Mainland, they can cash-track and get into even math courses in the junior and senior year, which is a great benefit. There was also historically a Wellness Day at both Summers Point and at Lynnwood. But for some reason, I guess because of COVID, it dropped off. So Dr. Vanello was very, very much in favor of bringing that back. And Mainland has approved coming back to Summers Point for Wellness Day for academic year 2024-25. So thank you very much, Dr. Vanello, for that. The other thing is that we're having initiatives to support and encourage seventh-grade summer programs to prepare kids ever in eighth grade for Algebra I. So that means any child who's in seventh grade who's doing well, they can take the summer program and then have our Algebra I here at our school, which again, will be using the same metrics as Mainland. So they'll be able to go through the Mainland school system as prepared as students who are taking Algebra I at Mainland. But our students will be able to cash-track. Also, let's see. We're also looking at alternative calendars to allow home visits for the Summers Point, home visits for our preschool children through other school activities. So when they're not here, we're going to try to do other, try to do some home visits. And there's also a huge initiative, which as a curriculum expert myself and higher, and I'm so excited about. Dr. Vanello is leading the initiative to develop common benchmarks throughout our curriculum. So we will be able to measure students' achievement and successes as they progress from, of course, either grade to grade. So we can actually see how students are doing instead of independently, grade for grade, giving an assessment. There are some IEP initiatives. So the special ed budget, as you heard, necessitates the removal of subject eds. But that may turn out to be a positive action in the gen ed, in the special ed arena. Because now we're planning to put those children in with other childrens other childrens in the common classroom, which is socializing all children together, which is a good thing, and all students will have the support to do well in those general education classes. It provides the least restrictive learning environment. Our dean was classified as special ed students, and that is, um, based on evidence-based practice, best practices in the elementary ed. Um, Dr. Vanello is also, um, starting initiatives for professional development to the ELA and Math Science Curriculum Planning. So all of the, um, teachers will be getting together and planning the curriculum from beginning until the students leave here at that point in grade. So that's wonderful. Um, we do have some Title II funding that needs to be used up. So the plan is to provide seven hundred and twenty hours of time for each content area where this faculty, where the subject matter experts in those areas can come up with benchmarks to go across the areas. And that is a wonderful initiative and should be applauded. And the additional couple thousand that we have left over will support Renaissance programs, including district-wide events, fundraising, and field trips. So, um, really, this is my first time sitting on the instructional committee and I just had to tell the whole board that Dr. Vanello's done a wonderful job with this, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, here none. Moving on to the board, please have the motion to approve items eight B through H, please. Thank you.
Second motion.
Thank you. Any questions? May I roll call, please?
Dr. Myers?
Yes.
Dr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomasello?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming? And Mrs. Nenek?
Yes, thank you, motion approved. Moving on to personnel. You already had your, uh, heard from Dr. Myers regarding additional information regarding negotiations. So we will move to ask for a motion for Ms. Mary Dini. Turn in, please.
Motion, Dalton?
Thank you.
Dr. Thomasello?
Thank you. Sorry, I apologize, I'm having computer problems. Okay, any questions? May I roll call, please?
Mrs. Fleming? Mrs. Thomasello?
Yes.
Dr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Nenek?
Yes, thank you, motion approved. Yeah, motion to approve. Motion approved of items nine in the board.
Motion, Myers.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? May I roll call, please?
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Dr. Dalton?
Yes.
Dr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming? Mrs. Thomasello?
Yes.
Mrs. Nenek?
Yes, thank you, motion approved. Now, motion to approve items ten A through B, please.
Motion, Dalton?
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? May I roll call, please?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Dr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomasello?
Yes.
Dr. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Nenek?
Yes, thank you, motion approved. Moving on to policy. If our policy committee report, Dr. Dalton, please.
Okay, um, we have a number of policies that are up for our first reading tonight. Um, on a wide variety of topics again, things like concussion protocols, vandalism, sportsmanship, items counseling, um, equal employment opportunities, employment plans, affirmative action. Um, those are up for the first reading.
Thank you. Any questions, Dr. Dalton? Okay, so I have my motion to enter, um, policies into first reading.
Motion, Dalton?
Thank you.
Second motion.
Thank you. Any questions? May I roll call, please?
Dr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomasello?
Yes.
Dr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Nenek?
Yes, thank you, motion approved. Okay, um, on the floor, it's time to open to the public. Public has anything they would like to address the board? Please go on to the podium.
Are you done today?
I am. I'm with the National Health Initiative. And you? Yes, you did.
Just to make sure I want to get back to the mic, state that so that we have it for the, uh, part of the recording. Yours, your affiliation, thank you so much.
Uh, my name is Carrie Hill. I'm with the National Health Initiative, and I come bearing good news. I have a way for the district to save about six hundred dollars per employee per year. Also, the employees will get more money in their check and get wellness benefits. You may say, how can this happen? It's, uh, part of the Affordable Care Act, or some people call it Obamacare. What we do, give you the quick elevator speech, is provide wellness benefits pre-taxed to the employees. Since it's pre-taxed, the seven point six percent fight attacks is then reduced. Then it's like, uh, an identity plan or an APAC plan, where the money goes back into the paycheck. So therefore, there would say net savings for the employee. Now, I know this sounds good, uh, I just wanted to approach the board so they would be aware of it, and we could set up a meeting with one or two people to do over the details. Or if you have any questions about the plan.
Thank you very much, this is a shared role review. Thank you. And lastly, did you just report?
I'd like to, uh,
We're not going for a bit, we're, we're, no, no, sorry, we're still in public. Okay, hearing none from the public, and at this point, public comment is closed. Board forum.
I want to thank the public and Mrs. Cott for fighting so much for our school district during the budget season. Uh, they have written letters, on letters to state officials and senators and Superintendent's Association. Um, Mrs. Cott has actually gone to Trenton, went to the meeting up there, and also written a number of letters, and also the fine work that Marion Martin's done for this budget. Very challenging for everybody to deal with this situation with the state. But if we don't continue to fight for money and funds and anything else from Trenton, then it's just going to fall apart. So really, thank you guys, we have to welcome beyond what we should be doing as far as the wellness.
I had the pleasure of attending a climate and culture meeting that was run by Mr. Kovac. Many teachers showed up, new parents, and it was a wonderful gathering of ideas and things that we could do to support the parents and the children in Summers Point. And I really encourage all of you to attend and participate so that you can have some input into what happens here and some of the initiatives that the school is trying to do. It was a wonderful opportunity. I, I see opportunities to partner with other, other programs within Summers Point to help all of our citizens, and especially those with, with other children. So thank you.
Thank you.
I know I've, uh, said this a little bit earlier, but I did want to, um, I did want to acknowledge again, um, you know, all the agenda that we improved was, uh, was the vision from the, from the PTO. Um, I wanted to acknowledge, I think it was a great idea that some of those parents that were in problem with PTO, they came up with in terms of, uh, connecting with and accessing an online platform to be able to have events. Uh, and, you know, we would have, like, there would be an event, and then each child and their parents would be able to share, um, the information, the nature of that, and a way to raise money. And I just think it was such a great idea. Um, you know, social media is, is a double-edged sword. But here's a perfect example of how helpful it can be utilized when, you know, for years, there have been so many people, uh, you know, locally, we've had so many fundraisers, but when you're able to connect with a platform like that and tie it to these events where the kids can take part in and raise money, and it can be shared, uh, off of social media to collect those donations, I just think those are really, uh, a great idea. Um, and, you know, obviously, the objective is to fund, uh, activities and trips for our kids. So like, when, when it's being shared all over social media or shown or texted to family members and friends, and they're seeing what it's for and how easy it is to just donate some money or write them in there, I think it really makes a difference. So I just, I just think it was a, a really, uh, great idea. Um, also, you mentioned the Education Foundation, uh, another organization that has partnered with, has been a part of Summers Point, uh, for so long, and the great work that they do. Uh, there are members that are part of that foundation that have been honored for twenty, thirty years. I mean, they've been honored for that long a time because it's so important to them. And again, their objective is to raise money, to fund programs and activities, uh, for our children. And so I just, I really appreciate their efforts. Um, I do want to thank the community as well. Uh, there was a event, as well as parents who worked so hard to, to, uh, to organize it and, and pull it off. But last week, uh, there was a beef, uh, and beverage that was fun to be opened for our current eighth grade class, and they have their semi-formal dance. Uh, this is a Summers Point tradition. It's gone on for decades. And it's, it's a part of the fabric of our community. Um, there's been some challenges because, obviously, of COVID and because of a lot of the items that we lost in the fire to our storage unit that happened back in, uh, February, you know, right before COVID, right in two thousand twenty. So it's kind of caused, you know, for years, parents would be able to pass things down, and there would be something to start with, but, you know, these last two years, that hasn't been the case. And so, um, you know, our community, our parents have had to work really hard within our community to try to raise money, um, and they're, they're doing that because, again, the goal is to provide our students with, um, a fantastic semi-formal, you know, good recognition dance at the end of the year. So, um, I just wanted to let everyone know about that, and I'm ready to go. Thank you, Mr. Kovac, and to Mr. Aaron, and to Miss Conroy. Um, this budget has been, every budget is difficult, every budget cycle is difficult. Um, but this year especially has been so much more, uh, difficult, uh, exponentially. And so, um, I just wanted to let you know, I, I really appreciate your efforts in trying to find every single step manageable to and to make things work in a system that, you know, we know doesn't, you know, according to our state funding formula, and it's, it's not easy, uh, but I, I hear you guys work, work really, really hard on it, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Last? Okay, for members, please, uh, you know, it's on board calendar. It's already, and, and to roll the book, please. Um, our community meetings will be the only sixth and seventh. And I know that you had, that you had sent, uh, you had a concern with, uh, student community meetings, sixth. Do we have a plan?
Okay.
Do we want to talk about the plan now, to get it in everyone's book, or do we want to wait?
Do we have a plan? Do we want to talk about the plan now to get it in everyone's book or do we want to wait?
We should be flexible. We should be flexible with our meeting. As he said, I think I have no flexibility at all. So if the other group members can be flexible, then we have a plan. How good.
Okay, so we're talking potentially our basics for the meeting, okay?
So we'll see if everyone is able to make that.
Okay. So do we want to discuss the conclusion of this meeting? Just because if we change it, I actually need to get it in my book in advance in terms of my schedule. So I feel like the next thing you know, it'll be, it'll be, it'll, so yeah, if, we can just talk a little bit afterward to kind of get that settled. Okay. And keep in mind, we also on the seventh immunity of one of our communities. There is the Atlanta County Jewish School Community meeting right here at Great Bed. So members, please keep that in mind. We do, I know this might be, it wasn't originally the plan, but we do need, do need to go into executive. So I need a motion to enter into executive for about fif- I'm sorry, fifteen, fifteen, fifteen minutes, maybe less, to provide some information on to the members. I have a motion. No, we do not. We do not.
We will anticipate action.
Okay, no, we do not anticipate action afterward. Okay, can I motion?
Motion.
Not a second. All favor? There it goes. Okay, we are in executive. We will return very shortly.